We will call this meeting to order, let us stand for our invitation and pledge allegiance. To our great Creator, we thank you for this precious day, we thank you for the precious sunshine that we are enjoying today. We thank you for all that you do, we ask that you come within this meeting, that you would clean up our hearts, minds, temples, and souls, that we will be clear to receive of you, to do your will, that we will be able to serve the citizens of Florence and all those who neighbor us throughout this world in a better capacity, to do the greater good for all. So you're welcoming to this meeting, we ask for you to please have your way, to bring peace and comfort within this world. We also want to remember those who have lost their lives and all the various acts of violence that have been experienced throughout this country and this nation. We ask that your spirit will abide above and all through us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, I would draw your attention to our agenda and I will ask that this time, we need to add an emergency item to the agenda as allowed under the Freedom of Information Act. The emergency being, the attorney for Mrs. Pecote has been, and we have been advised that he is very ill at this time and is presently in the doctor's office, and will not be able to attend the hearing scheduled for today at 4:00 PM. So we need to address the postponement and rescheduling of the hearing that was scheduled for this afternoon. Do I have a motion in second to add this to the agenda so we can discuss? You have a... So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign. This item has been added to the agenda, and also we have a second item to add it, and we will be addressing the emergency item as soon as we address the next addition. We have a request to have addendum added, which is a resolution, Resolution Number 2023-20. It's a resolution to recognize April as Black Women History Month. Do we have a motion to add this item?
Move. Second.
So we have a move, a motion and a second. End of discussion, hearing none, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign. Let it be noted that Resolution Number 2023-20 will be added to the other resolutions. At this time, we can address the emergency items so that we can be sure the public is aware of what is occurring with this rescheduling. So now, do I have a motion that we will, at this time, address the scheduling, well, the postponing and rescheduling of today's hearing? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? We have attorney here if y'all want to have a discussion?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to the open discussion.
Madam Mayor, we were notified at about 11:00 this morning that Mr. Bledsoe, who represents Mr. Pecote in this matter that was scheduled for a special meeting at 4:00 this afternoon, is suffering, they think it's a viral infection, he's having all of those symptoms that we hear going around. He is presently at his doctor's office in Hartsfield, and they notified us that he would not be able to attend the hearing. And of course, they requested that we postpone the hearing and that we let them know when it can be rescheduled. I know that everybody wants to get this whole matter behind us. We were ready to proceed. However, as you all know from our previous discussions, the state statute that sets up the procedure for this hearing actually requires and actually makes reference to the fact that the person that the removal is addressing shall have the right to appear with counsel at a hearing, to be able to answer any issues that are present. Having said that, I think it is incumbent upon us to postpone. They have indicated, the doctor's office has indicated to them that they think this is a viral infection and that he should be able to be back at the office by next week at the latest, by Monday. And they've advised that they will be here whenever council chooses to reset it. If you want to set another special meeting so that we can get this hearing behind us as soon as possible, they are certainly fine with that. And Mr. Bledsoe's paralegal, who I was actually speaking with, was very apologetic. They know this is a postponement and they hated to have to do it, but they said literally, there's no way he could be today. So I would suggest that you all vote to postpone if you want to discuss rescheduling now and look at your calendars, or if you want to say postpone and that we will immediately reschedule a special meeting as soon as we can match our calendars, either of those motions would be fine.
Chair recognizes Counsel.
My recommendation is that we just vote to postpone and let our administrator work with everybody's schedule to try to find an alternative date.
Any other discussion? Chair recognizes Counselwoman. 10 days or so is what I'm thinking, is that the statute we have, 10 days or something?
The statute is, but because we've already given notice, we don't have to go out 10 days. Certainly going out 10 days might be a good way to address it since we know he's sick today, maybe get to the middle of next week. But we don't have to worry about the 10-day requirement because we've already given, met that requirement.
Okay, that was my biggest concern. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor and we've had discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign. Let the record reflect that we will proceed with the rescheduling of this hearing and that this clerk will coordinate that time for us to get together for the next hearing. And at this time as well, we'll move forward and as we prepare, I would like to ask that there's no objection when it comes to our resolutions, that we move our resolutions forward and let those be held immediately after our public hearing. Hearing none, objection, we will move the resolution forward to come after our public hearing. So at this time, we have approval of our minutes. We have minutes from March 13, 2023, our regular meeting, and also minutes from March 31st, 2023, from the special meeting.
So move, move.
We have a motion and second.
Second.
Okay, end of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let it be known that it has passed. Next, we have appearance before our council. We have two appearances, but I do want to remind all of our individuals who will be before us today that we ask that you limit your presentation to five minutes, and that's in accordance to our city code or in Section 2, that's 248. So first, we will call for my Brother's Keepers to make a presentation to council. Please come forward.
First of all, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're going to have three of our board members come before you today and they're going to give brief presentations. One will do history, the second will talk about what we're presently doing, and then the third person will talk about what's in the future. So I'm going to get out y'all way and I'll come back at the end to close it up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, good to see you all again. I'm doing the history of my Brother's Keeper because I was there from the beginning. So we began in February 2019 while the government shutdown was going on. That's what we hoped to do. Four churches came together, Zion and the Church, the Baptist Church, Comfort of the United Methodist Church, and Pentecostal Temple, Church of God in Christ, where I was serving as pastor. We all four came together to look out for the needs of the community when it comes to food. We, in those four years, three years, we've been together for three years, going into the fourth year, and over those times, in 2019, we served 33,000 meals. 2020, we served 75,000 meals. 2021, 79,000. And 2022, 67,163. So it's been moving and it's been growing and increasing. The thing that I want to express to you, in those three years, in those three years, we've had three different locations and because we keep growing, because we keep growing. We were in New Ebenezer, at the She-Rach building, then we had the Big Cap Room, and then we moved over to Kingdom Living Temple, we grew again, and now we're presently in the Trinity Baptist Annex and we're still growing. So we're before you today, just to give you the history, that we started something that we're not going to stop, and we need your help and the support, with the help of God and you all, we can continue to make it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Andrea Jackson, I too am a board member, and we are eight board members at this point. When my Brother's Keeper Shelter began in 2019, there were five board members. So we are growing in a positive way. Currently located at 124 West Darlington Street in the Trinity Annex. Thanks to your previous generosity and to ongoing support, we have been able to transform the Trinity Annex into a location that now has a commercial kitchen in which we can prepare hot meals. We currently serve hot meals six days a week. On Sundays, we prepare and deliver snack bags to our clients. We serve in five different parks now. Northwest Park, Levy Park, Iola Jones Park, Timrod Park, and now Maple Park. So we're continuing to grow and move in a positive direction. We are so pleased, in addition to being able to currently offer the hot meals and the snack bags on Sundays, to be able to offer hygiene products to persons who may need those, clothing items to those who may need them, just spiritual encouragement as that may be needed, and we do grocery care packages for shut-ins. So we offer a myriad of services that we are so pleased and proud to continue to expand. And in addition to serving individuals in our community, we support agencies through donations of food items that are donated to us. Currently, approximately 20 agencies and 20 churches receive food items, supplies, et cetera, on a weekly basis as a result of donations from my Brother's Keeper Shelter. So we are so pleased that in addition to that commercial kitchen and spaces for pantries and so forth, we have a generator, so if there is an electrical outage at any point, especially one that impacts not only our facility but the city of Florence, that we will be able to continue to offer the service that is so desperately needed to help persons to shelter from hunger. We, most recently, as recently as last week, had our walk-in freezer in summer. So as you can see, we try to be very good stewards of the donations, et cetera, that we are blessed to receive. We thank you for your previous support. We look forward to your continued support so we can continue to do that which we've been called to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Cassandra Simmons. I am the wife, Marcus Simmons, and I have been given the task of, speaking of our future, my husband has lots of visions. I won't go to the long-term visions, but our immediate visions for my Brother's Keeper is we will be soon partnering with the school district. We have been contacted by someone in the school district that has concerns regarding those children that are living in the hotels off of 52. Buses drop off a couple of kids over there, and they are concerned about them getting a hot meal in the evening. As you know, some of you are educators, know that sometimes those kids have to have lunch 11:30, 11:00. So by the time they get home, they're hungry again. And you know, living in a hotel, they may not get that full meal. So we will soon, once we get the approval from the district and consent signed off by parents, we will add that as a route to go out and deliver hot meals. Another future partnership is with PD Mental Health. They have contacted us regarding those individuals that have mental issues and who are unable to get or provide themselves with the meals that they need. So that would be in our immediate future. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you all can see, we have been busy and we are trying our best to stay busy. We can't thank Florence enough for what you do, Madam Mayor and all the councilmen. We thank you all for your continued support. This is really where our support comes from. We represent Florence for you all. If there's anyone that's in need that you know of, we constantly have what we call snack bags that are ready, at the go. You just come by and you can pick up as many as you need. And we also have the hot meals that are available. If there's any situation that comes about, of course, our main goal right now is the point of collaboration. I'm working on an emergency plan now with the other feeding ministries in the city to make sure that if something does happen to our city, we all collectively can work together to get something done, to make sure our citizens are able to be fed. So that's something that I'm working on currently, to make sure that is done. Of course, you already know, we've already partnered with Hope Health. We've been contacted by MUSC as well, they're wanting to partner with us so that they can make sure those that they come in contact with, that they know are in need, they can receive what they can from us. So if there's anything that we can do for you guys, we most surely will try to do our very best. And I thank y'all for what you do. Any questions?
Yes, also, Mr. Minister Simmons, I heard you say you'd be partnering with Florence School District One. Would the young people who are in 52, are those going to be some of the ones that was displaced from the apartments through the Housing Authority, will any of those?
They are, those as well as several others, since the pandemic. A lot of families have found that it's a difficult situation to maintain housing where they are because housing, as we all know, is starting to elevate as far as the prices concerned. So with that being the case, what's happening is a lot of people are having to move into the extended stays or the weekly hotels, and they may have a bill that they've created from where they were. So in order to get back to where they were, they still have to pay that deposit. They have to pay the arrears. They have to put down a new month's deposit. And all of that with some of the jobs that they currently have, they don't have the ability to get out of the situation at the end. So we're just doing our part to help with, you don't have to worry about the food cost that's involved right now. Work on trying to get those things covered. So we have one hotel that has 16 kids in that one hotel that we are trying to work towards. We've already been gifted a new van to go out to these hotels to do that. So we're just waiting on the approval from the school district to let us go ahead and start.
Okay, now, so when you, if you reach out also to the Housing Authority, because I know that there were some funds that they've been utilizing for meals and various things. So I just want to suggest, reach out to them too as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jubilee, Father Councilman Jubilee. We have Councilman Braddock, in order, and then we have Councilman McCall, then Councilman Smith.
Everybody's going to get a turn up.
Yeah.
I think the first thing all of us are going to want to say is thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you to your board, thank you to all the volunteers, thank you to everybody because it's a mission of mercy and it comes from the heart. You don't do what you're doing without a big heart, and we know y'all have a big heart, and we just want to say thank you very, very much for that. But for the benefit of those who maybe are not terribly familiar with your organization, unlike those of us up here, if you can just give a two-minute synopsis of when you talk about your clients, I know you're talking about the homeless and those in need, but if you can give a brief kind of summary, and then the other part of it is how you're working with those other organizations in town because council is very, very, very interested. And anybody that wants to come before us, let me just tell you, please come before us with a plan of how you're working with all those other organizations that are already here, that are already doing great stuff, how you can work and form partnerships, and I know that's what you're doing. So if you don't mind, just touch on those two points for us, please.
Okay, so we have approximately 100 volunteers that show up every week, different days during the week. We have volunteers that do nothing but cook. We have other volunteers that do nothing but put the plates together. We have other volunteers that do nothing but drive to the various parks because the individuals that are in need, whether they are homeless, doesn't matter to me. If they are there and they are wanting a plate, I'm going to make sure they get something to eat. And then we have other individuals that come in and just help clean up or just help to make sure things are organized. So there's always room to do something where we are. And we've been doing this now for, this is starting our fourth year. So if you have that desire to help or if your organization wants to come and help, but you want to take something because you want to do something for what you're trying to do, we'll be glad to partner with you with that as well. We've also had a partnership with Francis Marion. I'm back in school, y'all. Where some of the students have come out and helped throughout their semester with us as well. The collaboration part is huge for us. For example, just to use an example, Hope Health, when they have a client that comes in and there's some questionnaires that they have, they will inform us and let us know if that client is truly homeless, living out of the car. There's a specific bag that we prepare for those people who can't cook. Then you have individuals who can cook or they may have cooking availability, but they don't have what they need to cook. So we make a different bag for them. However many may be in the family, that's going to increase or decrease the size of the bag. We provide meats, things of that nature, for those individuals on a daily basis. So if they give us a call, PD Mental Health, Hope Health, if House of Hope calls us, they're in need of something in particular that we have, we'll make sure that they get it. It doesn't cost anything, we just give it because we know that they are also trying to do those things that we may not do, but together we can make sure it's all done.
Thank you. And at this time, we are proceeding the order of the roster, I just think.
Well, I'll be brief, you know, Marcus, I've spoken before. I got an opportunity to tour his facility, and one thing I can say about my Brother's Keeper is they are a good steward. And so whatever we have done in the past, they've been a very, an excellent steward of that. I'm sure they'll be moving forward. I went to see his new facility and we went through two rooms and I'm thinking that's it, and he's like, no, there's more. And we go outside and I'm thinking, and I'm already wild, and I'm like, man, you know, wow. And he goes, no, there's more, and no, there's more. And so, you know, they are very appreciative of your ministry. Our latest expansion was in part due to a partnership and knowing that we could provide the food needed through our working relationship with my Brother's Keeper. Currently, we're doing about 300 meals a day in-house for the people that we serve, and we could not do that without our collaboration. So thank you very much, Marcus.
Thank you.
My next, well, I guess kind of the problem always coming up is George. He always asks you questions, I always try to skip him. Unless, again, thank you all for all the work that you do in this community. I guess the thing I'm always going away by is with you all is, and you all are volunteers, you're doing this from the heart. I mean, and that's, you do it seven days a week. That's tough, for you to constantly, again, show up for these people. And I think many people in this neighborhood, in the neighborhoods of Florence, I see all the work that you all are doing and are very proud of you all. And I wish we had many other successful nonprofits like you all who really care about what they're doing and are doing God's work. So thank you for that. A question I do have is, I know you touched on some of the organizations that you are working with. Are you, have you ever requested anything from the county? Do you receive any funding from the county?
We have tried in the past and they said they would look into it, but we've never received any funding from the county.
Okay.
It would be nice because when we say Florence, we include the county as far as individuals that we service. So it would be great to get them on board to help us out if they could in any kind of way. Because every penny of what we get goes right back into, we really don't have anybody, including myself, that are paid staff. So the monies that we receive go towards getting meats or plates or to-go boxes or napkins or forks or soap or whatever may be needed. So those funds are used specifically for those purposes and nothing else.
Okay.
Counsel, Ms. Smith? Thank you for your vision, thank you for your diligence and your dedication to help everyone. Your vision of my Brother's Keeper is what makes Florence great and what makes us probably the best city in the state of South Carolina. My biggest thing, I wanted you to express to everyone, I know you said you do 60,000 meals a year at five different parks. What are your pickup times, so that everyone may know? Some people think it's once a day, but what are your pickup times for meals?
So we have two different ways of picking up meals. One is if you want to come to the parks, we have scheduled times that we go to individual parks. We go to Northwest at 2:30, then we go to Dr. Iola Jones at 2:45, then we go to Levy or Levi, depending on who you are and where you're from. We go there at 3:00, and then we go to Timrod at 3:15. But we have a separate individual that comes at 2:00 to pick up for the park, the additional park that we mentioned earlier. And he delivers to specific individuals that are waiting at that park for their meals. We also have Salvation Army, they come every day to pick up their meals because their budget was so constrained because of food costs and inflation from the previous year that now they are partnering with us where they come and pick up their meals every day for those individuals who stay at the Salvation Army. So we've partnered with them as well, so those are the times. Now, if you give us a call or if one of our partner agencies calls us and tells us that they have a family or if one of you guys called us or someone from the community called us and said, we've got someone that's in need, we ask that they come and there's a form that we have that we fill out, and we're normally there anywhere from 10:00 to 3:00 every day. And if they come during that time, once the form is filled out, we'll immediately make a care package for them so that they can take it with them. We just really need to know how many people, we try not to get too into their personal, individual matters, but if they're in need, we'll do it for them right there.
Counselwoman Barnes?
I too want to just thank you. The medical field, they are finding that nutrient deficiency and disabilities... I too wanna just thank you. The medical field, they are finding that nutrient deficiency and disabilities, you've got behavioral problems, you've got learning disabilities stem back to a deficiency in nutrients. And so I am excited to hear that you all are working with the schools, because that is really, really important. Even some of our medical issues that we suffer with stem back to a lack of proper nutrients. So thank you so much, and we say kudos.
I did a research paper this year concerning homelessness and having psychotic episodes. And over 50% of the individuals who we have in our prisons, or in jail, or going to places like PD Mental Health have experienced homelessness within 24 months of that happening. And then with the homelessness, you now have the problem of being fed properly, getting what you need to make sure that the children can respond properly in school and things of that nature. So they all go hand in hand, and if we all do our little part, we can make a difference for everyone.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neese.
Well, I gotta say something, because everybody else said it. I wanna say, Marcus, I remember in the beginning, when y'all was at New Ebenezer, in the place, in the she-rack doing it. So to see how big and how much you've grown, I am impressed. Thank you so much for what you're doing. And you're right, Councilwoman Barnes, people, we ain't ourselves when we hungry. So, you know, we do crazy things when we hungry. So by you feeding the people, I'm sure that has cut down on some of the craziness that happens in our city. But I wanna definitely, a free, I wanna thank you for all that you do and continue the good work, and I can only imagine your visions, your future visions, like your wife said. But thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to your organization. At this time, we are called forth, the Florence Downtown Development Corporation for acknowledgement. Will y'all please come for all members, and I believe we have Hannah, Rachel, and I'm gonna ask that the complete board come forth, and I would ask that Hannah give us a brief presentation of what occurred. All board members, please come forward as well.
So Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you guys so much for taking the time to recognize us today. I'm joined by our board and our board chairman, Dr. Fred Carter, here today. So last, was it last week, two weeks ago now, in Boston, Massachusetts, our downtown Main Street program was awarded the Great American Main Street Award, which can only be given to a community one time. And we were joined up there in Boston by two other communities, one in New Jersey and one in Virginia, but we are one of the top three Main Street communities in the country, which is a tremendous honor for us. And we were awarded this award based on our commitment to inclusivity and our commitment to economic development and a wide range of programs that we have been working on over the last 20 years. So it's a really exciting moment for Florence, and yeah, we brought the hands up here.
Simply kudos to Hannah and Rachel for the hard work staff put in on this.
I'm excited. Please come forward so that they can get a group picture of the rock. And all of you, you know, it was a big event. This team that represented, well, me and the city, they managed to get rain in at the Florence Airport.
That's right.
But I also want to say that the efforts that you see today is not accumulation of this one team. You have to look back for over 20 years, because I might tell you, the things that are being done in our city is based on the foundation that was built by those who came before. So they built it, and we're simply adding on it. And as we're doing these great things, it's our responsibility, we have a foundation, that the next leadership team who come forth, who is peak elevated Florence County, so thank you to this team, but also to our city staff and to our city council, because it's a team effort, and also to our citizens who support our businesses downtown. Because downtown cannot exist without the businesses, but also for the people who come and support these businesses. So thank you for all that you did to make sure that the city of Florence is successful as a whole. And thank you to these board of volunteers and to our city representatives. Thank you. Thank you. We all wanna get a picture for us.
Can I say something?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCall.
I just wanna say, when you all won the, when the war was given out in, it was in DC, and all these cities up there bragging about their downtown and this and that, and then I got the alert on the phone that we won. I just kinda just, I didn't say anything, I just kinda set up my seat a little higher. We're doing a little something here, this is wonderful. Again, thank you all for the work you've done as a Mary Express. We're, you know, we're building on something big here in Florence, and we continue to work together with the partners that has been formed over the last 20 years, and we'll continue to grow, and that's what we all want. So thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we will proceed on with our agenda, and we do have a public hearing at this time. And it's a public hearing will be held to receive citizens' input on the allocation of for $304,546 in Community Development Block Grant Award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And we declare this public hearing open.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As stated, the city of Florence is an entitlement city in which that we receive CDVG, or Community Development Block Grant Funds, each and every year. This year, we will receive $304,546. Last year, we received $319,283. There is a formula based on population, percentage of low mod income persons, as well as the unemployment rate of the jurisdiction. We do have three national objectives when using these funds. We must meet these objectives to benefit low mod income person, aid in elimination of slumming blight, and meeting a need having a particular urgency. There's some caps we have to look at when we're looking at allocating the dollars. There's a 20% cap on planning and admin expenses. We set that aside each year, and previous councils, we actually utilized that fund for our neighborhood redevelopment. We also have a 15% cap off of public service, which includes sub recipients. Previous budgets here, as you see, last year's budget and 21, 22 budget of $295. Generally, we use the funds for emergency rehab. Our Section 108 loan is a loan that, is a million dollar loan we took out about 15 years ago, and we actually funded some improvements at Levy Park and Barnes Street. Down payment assistance, that's housing down payment assistance we utilize. Speaking of my brother's keeper, last year we gave them some funds out of CDVG, as well as some general fund dollars, demolition is projects we do, and again, that planning and admin cap that I spoke about earlier. Other activities we've done in the past include road repaving, demolitions, acquisition of real property, we've done subdivisions, down payment, we've upgraded water sewer lines, done a number of drainage projects, emergency rehabilitation, and some recreational projects. Sub recipients, these are generally nonprofit organizations that request funding, and they're doing services that the city normally wouldn't do, and other previous service recipients include my brother's keeper, Lighthouse Ministries, Manor House, Community Action Agency, Salvation Army, and whosoever. We've had a number of meetings in March, starting all of the month of March, in different community organizations. We started with Northwest, and these are their requests, Streetlights, Levy Park, housing demos and rehabs. Woodmont asked for replacement of their entrance sign. Williams Heights asked for lights in the Dorothy Hines Nature Trail, housing demos, benches painted at the nature trail. Wilson Heights asked for improvement to the community center at Dr. Ald Jones Park, arts and craft items, exercise equipment, bike lanes, ping pong tables. Liberty Street, benches at bus stops, lights on Brunson Street, and drainage repair. We've had a few requests from sub recipients. They include Tenacious Grace, my brother's keeper, and the Manor House. That ends our public hearing.
Do we have anyone to sign up for the public hearing? Hearing that we have no one has signed up, and at this time, there's no action to be taken. We will declare the public hearing closed. Thank you. At this time, we will move forward on our agenda, and we have repositioned our resolutions. And I'm asking for Mr. Davis to come back forward as we go through these resolutions. Our first resolution we have is Resolution 2023-14. It's a resolution of recognition of the Florence 14 U All-Star Florence Basketball Team for winning the South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association State SCAP Championship. Do we have a motion?
Some moves.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Let states the record that that resolution has passed. And also Resolution Number 2023-15 is a resolution of recognition of the Florence 8 U All-Star Boys Basketball Team for winning the South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association State SCAP Championship. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the resolution has passed. Next, we have Resolution Number 2023-16, a resolution of recognition for the contributions of La La's Full Court in the community. Do we have a motion?
Some move. Second.
We have a motion and a second, hearing any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would like to ask, do we have any representative from the organization here today for La La's Full Court?
Yes, Shalonda's here.
Ms. Dees, would you please come forward? I would ask that Councilwoman Neese Smith Jackson, please receive the resolution to go and present it to Ms. Dees. And Ms. Dees, after you receive the resolution, if you have any comments, you're welcome to take podium and give any comments that you desire. Please come forward, we can come here.
I really, part of my resolution this month, everybody, was really to give appreciation to all of these small organizations in our community that's really making big impacts. And La La's Full Court, you are definitely doing that. Thank you for everything that you've done, that you continue to do in our community. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you all so much for acknowledging La La's Full Court. This is just gonna be great. I love having the opportunity to serve our community, and so I will continue to make a positive impact in enhancing the lifestyle of Florence, South Carolina. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Number 2023-17. It's a resolution of recognition of the contribution of Royal Lights Finest in the community. Do we have a motion in a second?
Some move. Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed like sign. Is there a representative here to represent the organization? If so, would you please come forward? And once you have received recognition, we would ask that if you have a spokesperson who desire to speak for the organization, you're welcome to take the podium there.
Y'all, this is Royalty Finest. This is also my sister's social club, and they do a lot of work in the community, from voter registration, feeding people. They really do good work, and I wanna thank y'all for everything that y'all do. They keep Liberty Street fed over there, clothed, all that. So, and they don't ask for much, they just do. And I appreciate all the things that you guys do for our community. Thank you.
If you have a spokesperson, if you have a spokesperson for the organization, they're welcome to take the podium at this time and speak for the organization.
My name is Teresa. I'm the president of Royalty Finest. I'm not a public speaker, I did everything I had to say to everything. So I'm just gonna talk from the top of my head. We are Royalty Finest, a social club, and we are located on Liberty Street, where we try to give back to the community. I've seen my brother's keeper is here. I've never heard of you, but I would love to connect with you somehow.
Oh, he did, he did the card.
We will try to do something, you know, if we can just keep in contact with each other. Yeah, we are a social club, and like I said, we are here to help the community out. And if there's anybody that needs anything, you know, we are always here. We're right on Liberty Street. If you need any kind of place to have something at, or just give back, do giveaways, you know, we are there for the community. So, and I wanna thank you all for recognizing us. We have several other social clubs, but we're on the best.
And I'm glad to see another partnership is being formed out there between the two organizations.
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution Number 2023-18. It's a resolution of recognition of the contributions of For Giving Hearts in the community. Do we have a motion?
Some move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the resolution has passed. If there is a representative from For Giving Hearts, please come forward. And once you receive your recognition, you're welcome to go to the podium and give a statement. Thank you.
This organization, y'all, For Giving Hearts, this lady does so much. I mean, we were at, I helped you when, was that beyond? Yes, at the shelter MLK Weekend, and gave away so much personal hygiene for the people over there in the community. And she is constantly giving, has a pure heart.
For Giving Hearts.
So yeah, thank you for your continued service in our neighborhoods. Again, small organizations making big impacts in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the honor. For Giving Hearts, elevated pitch, here we go. I am an English teacher, so I literally have a full-time job, and then I always tell people I come home and do another full-time job. I purely run off of adrenaline, because it is truly part of my life's mission and goal to serve the community in whatever way that I can. And so I always wanna tell people a little bit about For Giving Hearts. It's a personal thing for me in many ways. My parents, Ricky and Clarice McKnight, had four children together. I have a twin sister, and so I'm blessed to have her with me today, but my two brothers passed away. One was hit by a car, and one passed away from sickle cell disease. And so I decided, because I have that true love and passion for community service, to start an organization. And that is how you have For Giving Hearts, the four McKnight children. And if you check us out, look at our logo. Our colors represent the birthstone colors of the children. And so we have four targets, and we focus on health, family, education, and community, and we are proud to serve primarily the PD and Low Country regions of South Carolina. Each year, we approximately distribute over 16,000 items, and I am so proud of that. We help people, as she said, with hygiene items, groceries. We provided families with heaters for the winter, whatever it is that they need. We provide awareness about many health causes and mental health. Of course, with our passion for awareness of sickle cell disease, that is one of the things that we do. But we also offer two sessions a month for grief counseling, which is led by a grief counseling certified counselor. So when I say, and as she said, we do so much, we really do, but we do it well, and I say that we are And I say that we are led by God and because of that, everything that I have a vision for, as she was speaking about her husband's vision, it has literally fallen into place since 2018. So again, we are For Given Hearts and we foster for given hearts and responsible citizenship. Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution number 2023-19. It's a resolution to proclaim April as Black History Month. Do we have a motion? Some moves. Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that this resolution has passed. Next, we will move forward with our reports to council.
Okay, one more. This is an addendum.
Yeah, we did do that addendum here. This Resolution number 2023-20 is a resolution to recognize April as Black Women's History Month. Do we have a motion? Some moves. Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, thank you. And at this time, we are proceed with our agenda. And next on our agenda, and you know, I know there's no one here to receive this, but I do want to acknowledge the Councilwoman Neese Smith Jackson did bring this forth and to acknowledge that April is known nationwide as Black History, Black Women's History Month. So thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing that forward. So next, we have report to councils. We have appointment to boards and commission. We call forth Mr. Davis for that, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today, we have two boards that have vacancies or expired terms. Our first board have a vacancy on the Civic Center Commission Board. That appointment falls to Councilwoman Barnes. There are no applications at this time.
No application. It means no one I will appoint.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And this appeal again, if anyone who wants to serve a part of their city, please go to thecitioflorence.com website and apply for these position. And I'm sure that the council will appreciate your service. Next, we will have?
Thank you. We next have appointment to the Housing Authority Board. This appointment must be someone that is directly assisted by the Public Housing Authority. We have a number of applicants, one of which is actually a resident, and that is Rachel Bowie, and that falls to Madam Mayor.
I would defer it this time.
That completes our boards.
Next, we have report to council from the 2023 NLC Congressional City Conference Report. I know several council member went, but do we have one council member who can give us a summary of the event? Do we have one that can give us a summary? Because we had Councilwoman.
Yeah, well.
Do this, who all attended? Just raise your hand. Okay, so these are the four that have attended. And who would y'all have to give us a quick report for that within five minutes?
Rock Paper Scissors. Barnes. Do I get a second for Barnes?
Councilwoman Barnes, thank you having nominated. Give us a report.
Well, it was really an enlightening visit to DC. We were able to tour the Capitol. We met, we were blessed to go out to dinner one night with Congressman Fry. He treated us to dinner. And of course, we talking Florence up. Then we went and met with.
Tim Scott.
Tim Scott and his people and we did. And Lindsey Graham and his people. And we also actually pushing for monies for to come back to Florence. We also built lots of partnership, you know, building relationships with city council people from all over the world. We were blessed to be able to attend a lot of classes and sessions to educate us on upcoming things and things that we could do better. But it was a really nice, good fulfilling trip. Did I leave anything out? I know I left a lot of stuff out.
I want to add.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. You know, unfortunately, we wasn't here during the time because that was the time we had the mass flood. And so I really appreciate this Karen Brown and Stephanie Wilson who sent us pictures that Monday of our flooding. So we had the meeting on Tuesday with our legislators. So while we were talking about, you know, they were actually talking about the needs of Florence, I could actually show them the pictures of the needs of Florence to have them to support the appropriations bill. So Mayor, we went back, because I know y'all went there a couple of weeks ago and talked about it, and we went back and hammered it in and hopefully we drilled it in where they're going to support this appropriation bill and really send us the money that we need for our infrastructure. So that was very powerful and I want to add that as well because we had the pictures to really show them the need for our infrastructure.
Yep, thank you so much for your report. Thank you all the council members who attended the conference as well. We appreciate you representing the city of Florence. At this time, we will proceed to our agenda to look at our ordinance in positions. Our first ordinance that we have is Bill number 2023-09 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to annexing zone light industrial, the properties located at 1100 South Church Street identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00149-01-005. Do we have?
I move to approve.
Okay, we have. Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Or we went back to ordinance, second page. Orness, and that is the property located where the old pet property was located and is for a second reading. Do we have any discussion? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neese Smith Jackson.
And I just want to make sure about annexing this property in and with the extent of the damages that there is no money that city council will have to pay for within our budget, correct? Everything?
Chair recognizes.
That's correct. So we have been able to conduct our Phase 1 ESAs on the property through our brownfield grant that we received through the EPA.
Great, that's all we need now.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please. Aye. And opposed like sign. Let it reflect bill has passed. Next bill is Bill number 2023-10 for a second reading. And as you remember, this is a bill addressing some corrections that were needed. It's an ordinance to correct clerical errors made in the assignment of zoning designation during the adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance by correcting the city of Florence zoning advocates. Do we have a motion? Some moves. Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 And opposed like sign. Let it reflect the bill has passed. Next, we will move forward introductions of ordinance. The first one is Bill number 2023-07 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to rezone a parcel located at Dexter Drive at the Neighborhood Conservation 15 to Neighborhood Conservation 6.1 identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00101, excuse that, 50-01-140. And this items, there's no objection. Will be discussed in the executive session.
Madam Mayor, can I make a statement on this, not the executive session?
Not executive session.
Right, not in regards to legal advice that we're seeking.
Well, we would need, go ahead, let's get a motion in a second. Move, some move. Okay, we have a second. Second. So we have moved in a second. Now we have discussion. Yes, sir.
So we're going to executive session to seek legal advice on this. And that is all that we're going to executive session for. But some things have been brought out regarding this particular ordinance request, and I just wanted to address those very quickly. One, it stated that there isn't any current flooding on Dexter. Simply in my mind, that's because there's not any houses there. Secondly, it was said, or someone made some statements, that we were impeding development. And as it stands right now, four houses could be developed on that property tomorrow. Thirdly, it was brought up that the current issue, this flooding issue, was something that wasn't an issue before this ordinance came. But this has been an issue for several years. Every time there's an inch of rain or two inches of rain within 24 hours, my Facebook, my phone and my email blows up with pictures of flooding. And we have a meeting the last Tuesday of this month with our city assistant city manager to bring the community in to discuss what our plans are to remedy the current flooding in that area, you know? Lastly, we have 140 signatures from neighbors in that community that have been burdened by the flooding for several years. And I think, you know, when people look to come and develop in certain areas, they need to be a good neighbor first and foremost and to look to impose a change on something that's currently there that would affect 140 people simply so that more development could be made, more lots could be sold. I don't think it's being a good neighbor. So those things I just wanted to address. They're not executive session items, but I think that needs to be stated. You know, myself, I'm not for any changes in any ordinances in those areas until we have this new work done and complete. And it can rain an inch in 24 hours and I don't get a phone call. So until that happens, until we have the work done that we're looking to have done, I just want it to be publicly known that I am not in favor of any change, just so there's no misgivings. Thank you.
Now we get a parliamentary clarification on this attorney. We just motioned so that we could hear from the councilman. Now, do we need to take any motion toward that? Because that was motioned so we could hear from him prior to the executive session. What would be the?
Yes, ma'am. What the proper procedure would be that if council needs legal advice on this, you would make a motion that at the appropriate time, at the end of the council meeting, that you will adjourn into executive session if there's a motion in a second. And if it passes, then you will hold off voting on this until you've had that opportunity to receive legal.
So we just did, we were just in a discussion just now. So now to bring that to a close, since there was that motion so we can have that discussion, now it needs for someone to motion that.
I'll move that we take this matter up for legal advice in executive session.
We have a second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed like sign. This item will be taken up in executive session. Next, we have Bill number 2023-08 for a first reading. And the applicant has requested that we defer this item. So Bill number 2023-08 has been requested to be deferred by the applicant. So hearing none in agreement with the applicant, this will be deferred. Next, we have Bill number 2023-11 for a first reading. It's an ordinance authorizing and directing the city of Florence to enter into an intergovernmental agreement relating to the South Carolina Local Revenue Service to participate in one or more local revenue service programs to execute and deliver one or more participant program supplements and other matters relating thereto. Do we have a motion? Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? At this time, we're here for Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In 2020, the state of South Carolina entered into the Business License Tax Standardization Act or Act 176. The city of Florence adopted that act in March 8th of 2021. Well, currently, the municipal association collects business license taxes in the city of Florence, before the city of Florence, for three different programs, our insurance tax program, our broker's tax collection program, and our telecommunications tax program. The municipal association is now streamlining that process and they're renaming those, rebranding that process, and they're calling them the ITP for Insurance Tax Program, the BTP for Broker's Tax Program there, and the TTP for the Telecommunications Tax Program. So we're required to actually have another ordinance in place and amending or adopting this new ordinance to reflect those changes. It will not change the distribution of funds, they will remain the same, and it will not change any rates. It's just that we're now doing this, or the state is doing this throughout, to make all of the business license tax programs uniform throughout the state of South Carolina.
Have any discussion, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that bill has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill number 2023-12 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 2022-24 dated October 10th, 2022, and enact a new ordinance to amend Articles 1 and Article 2 of Chapter 12 of the Florence, City of Florence Code of Ordinance entitled Municipal Utilities. Do we have?
Some moves.
We have a motion in a second. At this time, we're here for Mr. Henley.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The ordinance before you is to, this ordinance was already sent back in January, but once we sent it to MUNICO to get it codified, they found some variations between the ordinance resubmitted and the current ordinance. So this is a reissuance of that to make sure everything's correct and uniform throughout the ordinance.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neese Smith Jackson.
So when I looked at the ordinance, it's really the only thing I saw need to be changed was EPA.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we taking out the Environmental Protection Agency.
Correct, and inserted either DHEC or no change, but just removing the words EPA throughout based on recommendation EPA was here doing inspection in June of last year.
Okay, so we no longer going by EPA standards, we going by DHEC standards, is that what it is?
No, ma'am. EPA is still in charge, but it's codified where they delegate their authority to the state of South Carolina. So South Carolina enforces the law under the guidance of EPA.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed like sign. Next, we have Bill number 2023-13 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to annexing zone RG3 parcels located off East Crawford Avenue identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00179-01-006 and 00179-01-007 and 90132-03-015. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion in a second. At this time, we're here for Mr. Plintmore, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. This is an annexation request by the developer, PC Land Development, I believe, to zone property located off of Pample Cove Highway. This is approximately 46 acres. They're looking at developing roughly 140 homes on this property. The annexation request and zoning is for RG3 and it was unanimously recommended by Planning Commission for this annexation. They do not currently have water and sewer available to them, and as part of this, they will be required to make those improvements. The developer will be making those improvements and working with that. This concludes.
Any discussion? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neese Smith Jackson.
Is there a continuous line there for us to?
We.
The lines, the contiguous?
Yes, yes, it is contiguous. It gets continuity through.
Right up.
Yeah. My mouse isn't showing up. Back here along the swamp, we annexed a number of properties back here and agreed receives continuity that way.
And what are the other houses or what is it zoned around here?
That is within the county and I believe those are unzoned parcels right now.
Okay, so that's the only part that will be in the city?
That's right, yes.
Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, and opposed like sign. Hearing none, let it reflect that the bill has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill number 2023-14 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to annex and zone RG3, Phase 1 of Smithfield subdivision located off Smith Drive identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00100-01-265 through 313. Previously, a portion of the Florence County Tax Map parcel 00100-01-093. Do we have a motion? Do you have a motion in a second? At this time, we're here from Mr. Plintmore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. This is a request for annexation. They will receive. They will receive zoning designation as RG3 12. And this is currently being developed as Smithfield. And in working with the builder and developer, we are going to annex each phase as they finish the development process. The following ordinance is the development agreement that we will establish between the City of Florence and the developer. Right now, it is, they currently have a number of homes started out there since our Planning Commission meeting. They have also subdivided it in parcels, so it has added those properties in and made that amendment. Water and sewer is currently available. And again, we'll get into a little bit more detail on what portions we will be annexing and when within the development agreement. The highlighted yellow area is the current, current phases. They have finished and have started developing homes on at this time. This concludes staff report.
Any discussion or question? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
Didn't we have some issues over in, close to that area with annexing some of those properties? Wasn't that the same area over there?
I'm not...
If, if I may, I think you...
Chair recognizes councilman.
Thank you. I believe you're referring to the tiny acres.
Yeah.
And the fact that they don't have sewer lines.
Okay.
They're, they're still currently located within the county. The adjacent, well, our, go back to the screen, our fire station is located here, and then Abington Hall and all of that development is located within city limits, as well as a number of those properties along Palmetto Street.
Why are they doing it by phases and not the entire thing?
That's a very good question. They have gone through the planning, development with Florence County as well as stormwater permitting and all of their, all of their permitting that way. So in an effort to continue to work with the developer and, and make that transition into city limits as, I guess, as less complicated as possible, they'll continue that construction and inspection approval and everything that they do with the county and finish that out by phase and then annex the property. And we, we can discuss that a little bit more in the development.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. In opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill number 2023 dash 15 for first reading. It's an ordinance to enter into a development agreement for Phase One of the Smithfield Subdivision located off Smith Drive identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00100 dash 01 dash 093 and 00100 dash 01 through 265 through 313. Do we have a...
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And at this time, we're here for Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This is a development agreement that we will be entering into with Highgate LLC. They are the developer of Smithfield. We have previously entered into a number of development agreements with Grove, with Blunts at Mill Creek, and maybe one other subdivision. And essentially, what a development agreement does, it was established back in 1993 to, to essentially lock in zoning for these developers of very large tracts. So it ensures that the plans that they have made and the funding, everything that they've established, it secures that. On the other side, as far as what city, how the city benefits, is it ensures that their annexation occurs upon the completion of that development. So as this development finishes out, they, they will be required to annex into the, into the city limits. Additionally, since they are developing all of the infrastructure, roadways, everything with the county, we are also placing within the development, the assignment of all the, the escrow along with the warranties on paving and everything that we, we would have if it were to be developed with this.
Any other questions or discussion?
One quick question.
Chair recognizes councilman.
Just to make sure I'm clear, so we are making sure in this development agreement that all of the infrastructure that's already in place is at the same...
That's right.
...standards that the city requires before any of this happens.
That's correct. That's correct. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just to...
Yes, sir.
One of the, the main reasons why we, we entered into this process with the developer is with the existing city limits all around that area, it was very much anticipated that annexations would start to occur as people began to live in these homes and, and purchase the properties. So in an effort to make sure we have efficiency with the services we provide, we, we began that conversation with the developer and he, he agreed to do that.
Any other discussions, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. In opposed, say so like sign. Therefore, let it reflect that the bill has passed for the first reading. At this time, we will proceed with our agenda as outlined. As you know, we have already completed our session when it came to our resolutions, and we've also received a report to council. At this time, we have our mayor's report, and I simply want to first, as the council heard about the award that was received from Florence Town Development Partnership Corporation. I want to congratulate again Rachel and Hannah for the job well done, along with all the businesses downtown and also the community for their support. And I see that we have a hand up in the audience. At this time, if we're going to add with Dexter, I'm sure that's where your hands been raised, we're going to take that into executive session, and when we come back out, you'll be welcome to speak once we come back out since that, yes, I recognize you. Yes, sir. Well, what we've done, we're going to take the information up in executive session, and when we do it then, we'll come back out. And then when we present that, then anyone who's in the audience who wants to speak to it, you know, we can acknowledge you during that time period. So I'm just going to have to ask that you remain with us until after we go through this agenda and come back from executive session. Thank you for your patience. We appreciate it. And just so you know, this is a quick update too. I just want to let everyone know that we have a wonderful print media here in Florence with our Florence Morning News, but we are going to be graced with the presence of additional media source. The posting carrier is looking at coming to the City of Florence, and on May the 1st, there will be a town hall which will be held at 6 o'clock PM at Francis Mary and Pat. And so you're welcome to attend also, especially to our council and everyone else. That would be May the 1st, 6 o'clock PM at Francis Mary and Pat. Also, just so you know that there's going to be a celebration in the life and recognition of the late Senator, Senator Hugh Letterman, and that's going to be held on Mother's Day. And this is going to be the Masters Work Choir will be performing also at the Performing Arts Center. I don't have a time for you, for that, but you are welcome to go to the Pat site and look for that, but that event will be happening on Mother's Day. And some recent news, I'm sure and hope that many people heard about the Green Book, but the City of Florence has a rich history when it comes to the Green Book. And we were honored this past month to have a marketplace at 712 Woodson Street, which is located in North Florence. It was a marker to signify the Ebony House, which is a house where many people who stayed came through, special entertainers, and it was honored to have the family there to speak. And on April the 29th at 10 o'clock AM, there will be another celebration being held at Dr. Olive Joan Park. So if you don't know the history of the Ebony House or the Green Book, please come out. I was, one of the descendants, she was speaking to me about some of the artists who'd been there, Hia Jackson, and she, she named a list of well-renowned artists, African Americans who stayed there. So please come out on April 29th at 10 o'clock AM at Dr. Olive Joan Park so that you can learn more about our history with the Green Book. But that is the update. I want to give you, those are some of the things that's happening with organizations that's here in Florence. And that completes my report to the council at that time, this time. We will move forward with our agenda, and we will go into our committee reports. And first, we will have a committee report from the chair of our Business Development Committee, please, chair.
Thank you. On Thursday, March 16th, the Business Development Committee met, myself along with Councilwoman Barnes and via the phone, Councilman Braddock. We had a update on matters that previously been gone over, but one of the things we asked for is the, an update in terms of how our committee interfaced with the comprehensive plan and what elements were taken into consideration. We were given an update on growth capacity with regard to utility systems as well as green infrastructure. We were given additional information regarding land use and development, housing neighborhoods, transportation, economic development, and recreation as the general areas within the comprehensive plan that we, that the Business Development Committee was interfacing with. It was a very robust conversation and a very good update. We then had some follow-up questions about some activities with regard to some of the developments that were going on, particularly with the Grove and the extension of the rail trail that's going to be going on from the current site where it comes to an end there at Ebenezer Park. And the plan to extend it, and it's our understanding, and Clint, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that that agreement with the developer has been finalized to some extent in terms of the extension of the rail trail through the Grove and leading out to the soccer complex. Is that right?
It's not, it's okay. It's worked out. Last, last.
It, it's mostly done.
Finalized, not signed.
Got finalized, not signed. But that's a good thing. We, we're very excited to see the extension of these rail trails and the trail system in Florence, and that's, that's another great quality of life improvement that helps us with business recruitment as we go forward. So thank you for that update. And then basically, there was no new business at that time unless there's anything further. Catch me, catch me. Then we're next meeting on April the 20th. That's the final, our report.
Thank you for that report. Next, we have a report from the Community Development Committee, chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We met the 9th of last month, and I think it was the 9th, yeah. But we had reports on demolition update with 13 homes demolished, four homes out for bid, five homes under review, 28 homes on the demolition list. We, we also talked about the beautification efforts that will be happening May 1st, the first Saturday in May, Keeping Florence Beautiful event. And I think we, that was about it. We talked about some other things, but it was, it's, it's in the making, so don't want to discuss them as of yet. But also, we want to talk, we are now still trying to hire a director for our CDC, so we're pleased asking for applicants to apply. We really need to move forward with our CDC so that we could actually start taking some steps. They're working, but a director would be great if we can get that in place. That is all.
Thank you, Madam.
And that's not it. And my, and our members are Councilwoman Lashandra Neesmith and Shaques McColl, Councilman.
Thank you, madam. Chairperson for that report. Next, we have a report from the Marketing and Public Relationship Committee. Chair, please.
Yes. We met last month. Our meeting is scheduled for after this meeting, but we are working on a strong annex plan. That is my next project is developing this annexation plan to ensure when we're doing a bulk annexes that we have the fire, the police, and also sanitary to ensure that we provide these services to all these properties that we annex. So again, we want to go towards smart growth and not just urban sprawl, so that is on our list, and we will be coming up with an annexation plan really soon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that report. Next, we will have a report from the Chair of the Finance Audit and Budget Committee. Please, chair.
Yeah, you're on, excuse me. Madam Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we did not meet, I don't have a report. We had scheduling conflicts due to the trip in DC and some other obligations, so we'll meet and have a report for us at the next council meeting.
Thank you so much. That completes the report of the committees. At this time, we are prepared to go into executive session to receive legal advice for 30 dash 4 dash 78 two, which... Do we have a... Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We're now standing in the second session. Take a minute breaks. We are returning from our executive session, at which time no votes or action were taken. We are returned to our agenda, and the item that we took into executive session was Bill number 2023 dash zero four, and it was for a first reading, an ordinance to rezone a parcel located on Dexter Drive from Neighborhood Conservation dash 15 to Neighborhood Conservation 6.1, as was identified on the Florence County Tax Map Number 00150 dash 01 dash 140, at which time we did have, and first and a second for a motion. So we are open up for discussion at this time. We've opened up for a discussion at this time, and with our discussion, we do have individuals signed up to speak, and we're going to call for Mr. Matta to please address the council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First of all, congratulations on the development of Florence City. I'm really happy with that. And I was just getting about my brother's keepers, the guys who were saying about providing lunch. Let me tell that one of my hotels where I'm managing, they often come and deliver this lunch. So I have seen them coming with that. Okay. Now, not wasting time, I'm trying to read what I want to say so we can save the time.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, as per demanded in the last council meeting, we have provided with the stormwater drawing by our engineers. At City Planning Division, Mr. Clint Moore said that they are satisfied with the engineering drawing and mentioned no one has provided till today such detailed drawing. Drawings, okay, sorry, not agreeing with the, with the, with their satisfaction in the engineering drawing given when someone is challenging the category of City Planning Division or someone having more knowledge. Let me tell you, like all of Indian community, which has grown at least four times in the last two years in the city, knows about my problem that's going on around, and let me make it clear that no one is happy with that. Our community contributes a lot towards the city development, may it be in the hotel industry, gas stations, convenience stores, liquor stores, restaurants, food chains, even doctors and IT professionals. Hope so as a minority in the city, Indian community will, will be happy with if we have a meaningful decision at our resuming. Let me tell you, I've been going through this since January 10th. After providing all the proofs and drawings, still have to struggle for resuming. I read an article about city planning to build 100 houses, sorry, 1,000 houses in downtown on both the sides of our district. Hope so the stormwater issue does not come along. Also, all new industries and development coming into the city will also have a question about this stormwater issue and the judgment we are having today. Let me tell you on, on... Also, in news media, there was no mention of flooding on Dexter Drive. They had mentioned about South Arby Street, East Harvey Spring, and many other parts of the city. So, are we stopped, like going to stop the development of the city? If someone is, some situation is there like around .6 miles away from my property, and still we are being stopped. I've seen some developments going on on South Arby and other places, which are about the same distance from my property. Stopping us is just hiding the failure of the developer of the Kirkwood and the city to solve the flooding issue. I think so. I have just passed on the message which I wanted to say. If anybody has any questions, I can just answer.
And this standing chair recognizes Councilman McColl.
I don't have a question, I kind of have a statement.
Yes.
And my statement is this, I kind of feel as if you're saying that this council is hiding the ball, like we're discriminating against you in this particular instance, and that's not the case. My statement is this, we have many, many people in that community who is going through a lot of flooding issues, and they elected us to make sure that we make the proper decisions in this area. I've been on many occasions fighting for developers to move forward, sometimes against, you know, against a lot of people in the community's wishes, but nonetheless, I've been fighting for people just like you, black and brown people, to make sure that they feel that they have equitable rights to the city. And for you to say and try to say with that we're discriminating against you is totally wrong and false.
No, so I'm not trying to say we are discriminating. I'm not saying that.
Yeah, okay, but the email I got, and I thought the statements you're making now is if you're saying the Indian community is watching as if we're doing something wrong to you. All we're, all we're doing is we're listening to the concerns of our citizens who are letting us here, just like you have as well, and we want to make sure we're doing what's right for the city of Florence. And that's all I have to say about that.
So, let me tell you, we have been asked, and we have been providing engineering drawings, which I think so, the planning commission, at the planning division, sorry, Mr. Moore and his team, they said that they got enough things which can say that it's not going to increase any flooding issues. Now, from my side, what I needed to give the engineering drawings, I have given. I always will be, let's say, whatever the decisions you make, we are going to accept. We are not going to go against it. But let me tell you, I'm trying to make it clear that whatever were asked from us, we have provided, and tried to make that we are not going to increase any of the issues. That's what I want to say, sir.
Chair recognizes Councilman Braddock.
Thank you for coming forward and sharing your thoughts with us, and we thank you for your interest in developing property to help housing, which is a good thing. So, we all appreciate that. The request to increase the density is the concern in an area that is known for having flooding issues, and that increase in density request that you're making is one that causes concern to all of us on council. And so, what I would ask at this time, and ask Mr. Moore to then proceed to take it up, is that we amend the motion that's currently on the table and send this matter back to the Planning Commission to have an evaluation done of the impact the density would have on this area, and then come back and tell us what their thoughts are with that consideration.
We have an amendment, motion, do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay. So, we have amendment and a second and discussion, okay? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Interposed, like sign. At this time, hearing no objections, we are going to receive the amendment as given. At this time, we will now take that amendment up for a vote. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by, well, do we have a motion for that one?
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a motion and second for the amendment and a discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Moore, would you please explain to the general public what that amendment to go back and so forth with me?
Yes, so, City Council has now made the motion to amend, the request to send it back to Planning Commission, and what we will do from this point is to get, with the applicant, to further address council's concern with evaluating the impact of the density. We will then provide that to Planning Commission at the next scheduled meeting, which would be on
Tomorrow.
May 9th, and then, there is a Planning Commission meeting tomorrow. And we will work with the Planning Commission at that point in which they can make another recommendation.
Okay. Any further discussions?
Madam Mayor.
Chair recognizes Councilman Braddock.
I would suggest that anyone involved in looking at further development or anyone in the current neighborhood come to a meeting we'll have on April 25th, that'll be Tuesday, April 25th at 6:00 PM. We'll have the, Mr. Clint Moore there, and we'll have the engineers there to show the plan that we're developing for that area to address this problem.
I appreciate that you are taking the interest and getting the problem solved at the Kirkwood Drive, but let me tell you, we are being held up since January the 10th. Again, I don't know
And there's been flooding for several years prior. I apologize that you've been held up since January, but these people have been dealing with flooding for years and years and years and years. So, I think a little bit of time and some prudence is in order, sir. Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. We do have an amendment on the floor. We've opened up discussion. I believe that we've heard from both parties. I will acknowledge the fact that this is an issue. We do have flooding here in Florence, but we do have a commission that looks at these items and bring forth the recommendation. They have brought forth a recommendation with council has chosen to amend to send back for them to look at the information which has been received and which was received from already, for them to look at that and see how that information will affect this project moving forward. I will acknowledge, I really hate that your project has been held up due to the procedures, but for the greater good of both you as a developer and also for the community, the process is in place so that we can be sure that whenever we make a decision, we will make an informed decision with all information. We respect that. We know that there's drainage issues there, and I know and I believe that you, from what your information you received, that you are not going to add to that drainage situation. But I believe on behalf of this council, what this council is saying, that even though we're taking that information and we will entrust that it will not cause additional problems, this council will feel more supportive of their vote if they get that information from the commission telling them that the change in density, correct, will not affect this issue. And because we've had a suggestive zoning that has come forth from us, that if we change, it's going to actually be affecting what that commission told us to do, and we want to respect their informed, you know, judgment, because they do get more information at the forefront than we do. So, at this time, I will thank you for your input and thank the council for their input. Do any other council member have any other thoughts, any other questions before we proceed? If not, we will call for the question, which is on the table, to have the amendment sent back to our commission so they can evaluate the information which has been submitted from the applicant. And when they will give us a report back, then we will receive that report, then we will vote on that information as received from that commission at that meeting. If that's the general concession of that, of the council, at this time, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Interposed, please say nay. Let it reflect that the amendment has passed anonymously, and to our request, we will have an answer next month first, so it's not hold, either way, but thank you for your patience. We thank you. So, at this time, to keep in order for the meeting, we have completed agenda items, and what we will do, I do want to acknowledge the green ribbons that we are wearing. These green ribbon stands for the April month, which is the month of awareness for sexual assault and sexual violence throughout our nation. So, please be mindful of this month of April, that we can do all that we can do to decrease sexual assaults and violence. Thank you so much. Can we have?
I got one thing to say. This Friday, at the Leatherman Center, there'll be Seniors Got Talent, so that'll be at 1:00. I'm actually one of the judges, so please come out and enjoy that. Also, Saturday, Ladies of Pastel, they're doing the Women's March and Brunch, which will start at the courthouse, and they're going to do a little march and end up at the loft. So, I am down this window to get speakers. Please come by, show your support, march with us, have brunch with us, all of that.
At this, at this time, we entertain motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion and second and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Interposed, like sign, standing adjourned.